Right after roll call, let's get that done.
I know I just talked to her and I forgot to clarify.
You guys have one of those.
I'm going with that.
Are we in? Did they talk for much conversation?
What's that? Hey Donna?
I got seven o'clock.
Good evening everyone and welcome to tonight's St. Charles County Council meeting. Right on time, the man of the hour. So we will start this evening with our invocation from Reverend Dr. Nicole, is it Torbinski? Torbinski, bing. She is the Assistant Professor Religion Chaplain of Lindenwood University. It is a Lindenwood University night, so just keep that theme in mind. After that, we will do pledge of allegiance by Coach Terry Hollander, speaking of Lindenwood University. So if you please stand and remove your hats. We will pray.
I invite all who would to join me in prayer and for everyone to accept the goodness these words intend. Let us pray. God of all times and places, we invite you into this place. Guide the counselors of our county and all of those who share in the ordering of our life together. May they be so filled with the love of your law and guided by your spirit that all their work may be done as in your sight, as worthy stewards of your good and perfect gifts. In gratitude, we lift up our praise for Lindenwood University Lions Cheerleading and Dance Team. We ask for your blessing on each member and we give thanks for their hard work and dedication, which has led them to victory. As we prepare to do your work this evening, send your blessing on our county. Increase in us the spirit of truth and justice, peace and godly love, that in all we do in this council, we seek after the good pleasure of your will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlmann.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
With that, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda and move the resolution, that Resolution Number 21 dash zero three, from later on in the meeting to present.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So with that, I would ask you to read the resolution.
Resolution Number 21 dash zero three, sponsored by council as a whole, a resolution recognizing and congratulating the Lindenwood University Lions Cheerleading and Dance Team for winning two national titles in 2021.
So with that, I would like to introduce Coach Kerry Nichols. Kerry, would you please come up front and Sean Brown, who is a coach, Sean, if you want to join her on up. So, social media is how we learn everything these days, right? So I saw the banners spread out on the beach and announcing the national championship and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to talk a little bit about the squad, talk a little bit about the national championship and feel free to spread the praise however you want to go.
First of all, thank you very much for having us and for the resolution. This was quite an honor and it was very surprising when I got the correspondence about it. My name is Kerry Nichols and this is Sean Brown, one of our assistant coaches. I'm a little nervous and I usually like a microphone, so.
We're not that intimidating, you shouldn't be nervous.
I will say that this has been my 20th year with Lindenwood University and we house about 110 student athletes within our cheerleading program alone. And I do want to thank you all because not only are they student athletes, they are ambassadors for the community. So we do try to do some community service and it was not much this year because of our situation, however, we do thank the St. Charles for allowing us to be a part of the community. This was our 18th appearance at the national championship. This was our, we came home with our ninth national title. So we came home with two championships for two of our three teams that we did take. Our third team did play second this year. And so it, we have one of the largest programs in the country and we are proud of that. We are proud of the work and especially this year, just having the opportunity after it got canceled in 2020 and taking that year and really kind of working through COVID and what we, what we weren't able to do this year, that we were able to complete a national championship. So we were very proud of Lindenwood University and the support that we're given at the university, the athletic department, we are part of athletics, which is unusual for a cheer and dance program and they do support us and help us, help us win national championships. So we are, we are thankful, we're thankful to the city for this honor and what else do you want to know?
So there were two categories that you won.
Yes.
Your two national championships in and those are?
We won in small coed division two. So because we're a division two NCAA school, we, we compete in that division and small coed means that we had four men on the floor and 16 females. So the other division we won was another small coed division two, however, they are in an intermediate level, so their skills are not quite as advanced as the other divisions. So again, four males and 16 females were able to compete on the floor.
And I understand in one of them, you got a perfect score?
We didn't get a perfect score, but we had no deductions.
Oh, sorry.
Which is, that is, that is accurate.
One does not mean the other, my bad.
Correct.
There you go.
So we, we call that a zero deduction routine where they made no errors, no mistakes. You can't really score perfect if you have different areas of difficulty, maybe a couple points of execution, somebody didn't squeeze their legs together, point their toes, something of that nature, but we didn't get any deductions or penalties, which is very hard to do.
Sean, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, it's just awesome just being invited here and seeing you guys' faces and just representing Lindenwood with Kerry and just being under her wing for the past seven years has been great for me. So just thank you again.
Sean is a St. Charles resident and so we, so it was kind of fun for him to come in here and, and actually he recognized several names that were on the board.
Elmen over here.
I didn't know, does the council have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
Just congratulations, it's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate it. So with that, I'll ask you to read the resolution and we will vote.
Resolution Number 21 dash zero three, a resolution recognizing and congratulating the Lindenwood University Lions Cheerleading and Dance Team for winning two national titles in 2021. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
So I'll ask you one more time to come up and officially present this to you. Sometimes I make the mistake of giving out resolutions before we voted on them, which probably premature and Representative Weeman will call me down on that. So if you would, come up here and we'll give this to you. We have copies for everybody. Excellent. Thanks again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And for those?
Yes, all of you.
These are all of yours, so.
Thank you.
I know Lindenwood just got out and graduation's all done, but as they circle back, let them know that St. Charles County is very proud of them. We appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will move on to our regularly scheduled agenda, which is also a very special treat that we have tonight. Representative John Weeman, who is the Speaker Pro temp of the Missouri House, has been gracious enough to give us an update on what happened at session. Representative, we welcome you. It's good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Appreciate it. This is, I think, my second appearance before you. Look forward to the grilling. But anyway, I just wanted to kind of take this moment to, to just kind of update you on what we, what we accomplished this year in the state legislature. I always tell people, we're, we're no longer in session, so we're all safe. There's no more, no more damage that we can do at this point. This year was kind of an unusual year, as every year seems to be. With the onset of still dealing with a little bit of COVID at the beginning of the year, we actually lost in the House, one week of session and the Senate was out for two weeks. So we, we lost precious time that we're up there to be able to work on legislation. So with that, I will tell you that we filed 1,559 bills in the House and we filed probably another four or 500 bills over in the Senate. So we're, we're still at our normal around 2,000 bills total in the General Assembly every year. So to put things in perspective of the 2,000 bills that we filed in the General Assembly, 69 bills were passed this session, which is a little bit down from what our normal average is, is around 100 or so. But of that 69 bills, 51 are what I consider regular bills that went through the regular process. 18 of the bills were budget bills. Every year we have to, by constitution, we have to pass at least the budget bills, which make up 18 separate bills. And within that, this is something I, mine might be off in the numbers a little bit, but within that, unfortunately, every year it seems like we have to pass a few bills that we call omnibus bills. So it'll be a bill that has a lot of things added to it. So I tried to kind of do a rough estimate as to how many amendments were put on some other bills and that was around 234 amendments. So if you look at the bill, bill number says 69 bills, but really it's 69 bills plus another 200 and something bills added on to them. And so that, that kind of makes it a little more challenging. For example, I passed a bill this year, House Bill 271, which I'll talk more about. When I got the bill back from the Senate, they added on 28 amendments to my bill, which was just one, dealing with one topic. And they added on 28 bills to it and then we, we pared it down to 23, which were all within, you know, the parameters of the title and, and the subject matter, but still it went from a one bill to 23 bills. Just to give you an idea about our state budget, when I started almost seven years ago, the state budget was just shy of $25 billion. Now it is, this year, it'll be 35.6 billion dollars. Now we'll tell you that of that, there's about $5 billion is that, is that CARES Act money. So it's not a real reflection of the, of the actual budget number, but, but that's what our budget is this year is 35.6 billion dollars. And there's still more federal money that we, we believe will be coming, but we didn't put that into the budget this year. We continue our record number of funding of the foundation formula for the K through 12. This will be our fourth year in a row we've done that. And just to put things in perspective, the state of Missouri, counting federal and state money, spends 7.5 billion dollars on K through 12 education. That was a, also a $20 million increase for transportation as well. So when you look at the budget, we spend a significant amount of money on, on education and we also increased higher education. I know Lindenwood University was here, they probably don't get a lot of that, that money or get hardly any of that money, but we also increased our funding for education, as higher education as well. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of the key pieces of legislation really affect, that affects, you know, St. Charles County. In particular, I mentioned earlier was my House Bill 271, which was dealing with local government transparency. And what that bill was intended to do and what it will do is, is to really help local governments, counties and cities to be able to take their financial information and put that online and use the state of Missouri's Missouri Accountability Portal to do that. A lot of counties, now your county, our county is pretty good about putting a lot of things online, but the, the goal is to eventually get every city and every county in the state to upload their data at least twice a year to the database, state database, and then that information will be available to citizens and they can download and, and look and, and review the finances. Within that bill, we also had a couple of other really important pieces of legislation. That 271 was kind of the local government omnibus bill. And one of the key factors was in it when we were dealing with COVID, the county across the river had a little problem with their health department closing down businesses without seeking the county council's review and approval. And so this, this bill addressed that issue and put a provision in it, basically says your county health departments, I think they're limited to 30 days for emergencies. Beyond that, they had to come back to the county council and get approval before they do anything else as far as impeding businesses from being shut down because of a pandemic. And yeah, big deal. And that, that, that piece of language was, actually was sponsored by Senator Onder and so that was part of his, his, his legislation amendment that was put on there. We also put another provision in there dealing with vaccine passports and the prohibition of that. So mainly we're just public entities on, for transportation, can't, can't prevent someone from coming into the courthouse or, or using public transportation and requiring them to have to provide some kind of proof that they've had a vaccination. So that, that prohibits that as well. Another bill that was a big deal for us, at least in the legislature, was Senate, or was House Bill 85, the, we refer to it as SAP of the Second Amendment Preservation Act. And there was some concern that in the legislature that we felt like the federal government might be, might be doing some things to try to impede on our Second Amendment rights. And this bill really addresses that, saying that if the feds come out with some new, new rules or executive orders or whatnot, that, that we believe is going to infringe on our Second Amendment rights here in Missouri, that, that our citizens are going to be protected, that our local law enforcement and, and government will not be following the dictates of the federal government to take away our, our right to bear honor. The other bill that I am really happy to be finished with is, is, and in legislature, a lot of times it, I tell people, it's good that we do take our time sometimes on passing legislation because a lot of times we need to kind of work through and make sure we don't, you know, pass a law with unintended consequences. And one of those, I know that was, was an issue that County Executive Elman was, was, was pushing pretty hard for the last several years was the Wayfair tax solution. And I kept telling you guys, we'll, we'll get it done next year. And then next year would come, I'll say, we'll get it done next year. Well, next year is now. We, we passed the Wayfair tax, online sales tax affix. So those, for those in the audience that don't understand what that is, is in Missouri, we already have a use tax. We've always had it. We just never really enforced it. It was basically if you had, if you spent over $2,000 outside the state of Missouri, then you were required to remit taxes for that, for that expenditure. Other states, I think we were the only one, and Florida were the only ones that hadn't passed a fix to allow us to collect that online sales tax. And unfortunately, we finished it this year and so that will be, moving forward will be, will be good for all the citizens. You might have any questions on it?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for everything you did this session. I apologize for jumping on you a year or two ago.
That's fine.
I'm patching it back now. I've got a copy of that bill and me and the county auditor have been going back and forth. Is it a use tax or sales tax?
Well, it's technically a use tax. They use the sales tax moniker, so I mean, I guess it's more, more.
And this is a question that the auditor, and we've been jumping around. Use taxes collected in this county go to county parks department, okay? Our parks department's pretty flushed right now. What we really need the money is in general fund to pay the police officers and the like. But if I understand that, the use, if it's a use tax, it's got to go to parks. If it's a sales tax, it goes to the general fund.
Well, I'm not, I'm an attorney, so I don't want to, I don't want to argue that case, but I will tell you this. I know that, that cities and counties that do not have, have not passed legislation, enabling legislation to collect that tax, they will need to do that before they can start receiving that tax.
We've got it.
So if you've got it in place, like I said, that would be, that's a legal, legal question, but.
How will it come into us?
As a use tax.
So you're probably going to have to go back to the voters, I would assume, if you want to collect that online tax and approach it from that perspective. So like I say, I'm not an attorney, so. But anyway.
Thank you for doing that, though.
That is a very, and you rightly noted, it's a very lengthy document.
Yeah. If you guys have to read a thousand of these a year, I don't want your job.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of work.
That's the reason I don't want his job.
Yeah, that's right. It's a lot of work.
Pretty tough language in here, too.
So we got that done. Another one that started to give me either gray hair or no hair was COVID liability. Now this was legislation that quite frankly, we should have passed it last year. The governor called a special session. I wish he had called it back in July, but he felt it was more important to call a special session for dealing with, with crime and all that kind of stuff. So we didn't, we didn't take it up until December, if you remember. So last December, the governor called a special session, Senate came in, they worked on it, got something done and then sent it to us and basically the House decided, well, we don't like it, we're not going to take it up. So we waited till regular session, started working on it and literally I was the bill handler for this bill on, in the House side. I filed the House version, Senator Huff filed the, excuse me, Senator Luke De Meyer filed the Senate version, sent it over and I handled it over in the House. It was the last bill on the last day, literally the last minute was, that bill was passed. And so that basically provides protection for businesses, churches, whatnot. It doesn't have anything in there. I know there's a lot of misinformation that was being, being spread about what it does and what it doesn't do. It doesn't give any of the nursing homes a free pass to kill your mother or your father or your grandma or grandpa. It, 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 those are criminal acts. If they neglect someone or abuse someone, that's, that's not, that's not protected under this COVID liability tort reform package. Doesn't give the pharmaceutical companies a free pass that they, that they produce, you know, vaccines that are, that are going to cause bad outcomes. That doesn't provide protection for that either. So anyway, it's a good bill. It was, it, quite honestly, it's too late, really. It should have been passed last year because we don't pass retroactive laws. So whatever's happened, whatever causations were, were done last year, those, those are still potential lawsuits that could be out there to our businesses and churches and whatnot. Another one, which was a big deal for a lot of the, the education reform folks was, it was our education savings accounts, our education empowerment savings accounts. It's a tax credit. It's the first time we've passed one of these in the state of Missouri. It's a, basically it's a tax credit for individuals who want to send their kids to, to a different school besides a public school. And so that was a, that was a very, very tough one that passed out of the House with 82 votes and you had to have 82 to pass it out of the House. And so it was a close vote. Another one was Senate Bill 26. This one turned into our public safety omnibus bill and everything in there, you know, the chokehold stuff in there. It had everything dealing with, with law enforcement reforms, you know, pretty, pretty extensive legislation that kind of the law enforcement officers, Bill of Rights, it just had a bunch of things in there. And it took a lot of work to get that to a final agreement, but both parties kind of came to the table and, and we believe that's the best package that we could do for, for Missourians. We also passed another one that this has been around since I started in the legislature was the Prescription Drug Monitoring Program. As you know, St. Charles County participates with St. Louis County on their program and quite frankly, about 85% of the state currently is under the St. Louis County PDMP program. Me personally, I've always been opposed to that program because I didn't think it really solved the problem. And I have heard plenty of testimony, I had a file folder about this thick full of information to prove my case. But I never fought it publicly. I was always a no vote in, in, on the floor. But that legislation passed this year. So we will now have a statewide PDMP program. There will be some protections in there regarding the protection of privacy and the data and so forth. So, but it's still, we shall see. I know that before Missouri had the PDMP, we were the only state that didn't have it. You would think that we would have been last, but we were in the middle of the pack. And I remember this chamber passed a law back in the day that said you couldn't buy acetaminophen because we had a meth problem. And then the meth went down and heroin went up. So I don't know if this is going to solve the problem. I, I haven't really seen the data yet to see whether the PDMP program that we've got in place has actually solved our opiate problems. I guess time will tell. But anyway, so that law passed. Last one I'll talk about and then I'll kind of take some questions is the gas tax. That's two, depending on who you talk to, Senate Bill 262, that was another very contentious vote. I know myself personally, I kind of, when I ran, I ran on a no tax pledge that I wouldn't support any new taxes. Certainly this was a, was one that I, was more, more thanks. This one's definitely a more difficult one because there are people that believe that, you know, it's been a while since we've had a gas tax increase. It was back in 1992 or 96, I can't remember the exact, exact. I can't remember the exact, exact date, but we haven't raised our gas tax since then. And, um, you know, we, we've been hearing from MoDOT that they just, they just don't have the funds to take care of 33,000 road miles. And so this was their solution. They've been trying to do this the last two times, as you know, they brought it to the voters and the voters turned it down. Um, so they went through the legislative process and were able to get the votes out of the Senate and were able to get enough votes out of, out of the House to, to pass it. Um, it goes from 16 cents, it'll go up to, uh, to 29.5 cents, but it's two and a half cents per year, um, for five years. And, um, I've always are, and by the way, for those who don't want to pay that extra tax, you can actually, um, get a, uh, get the, you can ask for the money to be refunded back at the end of the year. Um, you can actually go online and, and you'll be able to, to, um, request, if you have your receipts and whatnot, you'll be able to, to, for those who are Missouri residents and taxpayers, they can get the, uh, what they spend on that, whatever they call it, rebate back on your, on your taxes. Just the percentage, just the 12 and a half cents that they spent extra. Anyway, the gas tax, um, that will go in effect next, well, actually, I think it goes in effect as soon as the governor signs it, um, which will be in August. And, uh, there is, uh, some talk about initiative petition to, um, to put it to the vote of the people. So if that happens, that they collect enough signatures, that could be put to the vote of the people and then, and then potentially that gas tax could be, could be repealed. So just keep that in mind. Um, I will say this, just a couple more things. Couple of things that we didn't get done this year that, one in particular is gonna definitely be a big deal. Um, because there's a hospital, there's several hospitals in this county. Um, it's called the FRA, the Federal Reimbursement Allowance. In Missouri, what we do, um, like a lot of states, we kind of gain the system for lack of better words with the state, with the federal government. Um, we have the, the hospitals literally tax themselves. And we collect that tax, it goes into general revenue and then that's used as to, for us to get a matching funds from the feds. And that, that helps us get an extra $2 billion a year in funding on the Medicaid, Medicaid funding side. So every year we have to pass that enabling legislation to, to allow the FRA to, to continue on from year to year. And this year, um, we had, over in the Senate, we had a push to try to get some legislation put on to the FRA. Usually the FRA is always kind of a single subject. It's just, we're dealing with the Federal Reimbursement Allowance. This year, um, Senator Onder, uh, felt it was important along with Senator Whelan, that we should put legislate, an amendment on to that FRA to allow for, uh, protection to make sure Missourians are not paying for abortions. Because the Supreme Court a year or two ago had a ruling that basically said we couldn't, we couldn't do it through the budgetary process. Because in the past, we've always put it in the budget bills. We always put in there that Missouri would not pay for, um, abortions. Chemical abortions or regular abortions. And so we were told we couldn't do it that way, so now we're trying to do an amendment on to the FRA. And that's the reason why we're doing it that way. Now, that obviously blew everything up and so we, we didn't pass the FRA this year. So that's a $2 billion problem that we're gonna have to fi- figure out a solution to. So more than likely, the governor's gonna call a special session. We're gonna have to come back and kind of work on, work out a, an arrangement or deal to, uh, to get that done. Otherwise, we're gonna have to find $2 billion in the budget to, um, make up for that difference. And so with that also, IP reform and election integrity reform, those were some of our hot priorities that we wanted to get done. And it was just, we just ran out of time, so. With that, I will, will be happy to take some questions. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Cronin?
I jumped on you real hard last time you were here and I apologize. And I thank you a lot for everything you passed because what you pretty much passed is my wish list, okay? So when, you know, when MoDOT gets that extra money, maybe county won't have to pay 100 mil- $100 million for MoDOT roads. And they'll mow 70 a little more regularly. Maybe we can get the highway fixed at, at Wentzville that needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
Highway 79 needs to be paved, the letter roads need work, so. Everything is great. I'm really happy for everything you guys worked on. I know it was a lot of hard work, but you guys got a lot accomplished this year that's really gonna help the residents of this county. I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate those remarks. And I will tell you, the, St. Charles County is kind of unique. And I've had conversations with the governor about this, that, you know, we have our, we have our separate gas tax. And, and we, we use that money, we leverage that money. And you guys do a great job as a county, um, leveraging that tax money that we do locally with the state money. And we, there's a lot of road projects in this county would not be done had not been for us doing that and, and, and the, the state having the sharing program. Um, I will tell you this, I know I'm starting to get pretty irritated along with Senator Onder and Senator Igle and the rest of the delegation here in St. Charles County that it seems like St. Charles County is like the stepchild. And we've been complaining about the S curve on Highway 70 for at least three or four years that I know of. And then Highway N's a disaster. That needs to be, I mean, that, that's got a lot of work that needs to be done farther out west. Uh, Highway 70 off of K Springs, I know they're working on that right now as far as trying to come up with a solution. But that's something that we're gonna have to start really pushing harder for our county. For some reason, um, you know, we have a great commissioner, Bob Brinkman's a great commissioner, but he's just one of seven. And, and the state's divided in seven districts and they all get equal resources. Even though St. Charles County and St. Louis County and all the other collar counties probably produce 60 or 70% of the tax revenue, gas tax revenue. But we're not getting 60 or 70% of the gas tax money back in this, in this area. And that's gonna have to, there's gonna have to be some changes. I don't know how we're gonna do that, but we're gonna have to figure that out.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Chairman. Representative, thank you for, uh, all your work and, uh, I know, uh, you're glad to be home and spend some time with your family and, uh, only those who have been there know how much time you, you put in on, on that job. And I just want to say that, uh, given your thoroughness and, uh, given your clarity, and also given the fact that you're pretty loquacious. If you ever decide to run for the Senate and the people are smart enough to send you there, you'll fit right into the Missouri Senate with this unlimited debate.
We'll, we'll see about that.
Well, I would, uh, echo the county executive's remarks. Thank you very much for coming back and for willingly doing this, giving us an update. Uh, enjoy your senior year. I know 2022 is your last year in the House and, uh, who knows what the future has for you, but-
There'll be a lot of changes.
That's true. We have a lot of changes coming up in this county for our elected officials. But the county executive has, uh, talked a lot about the history of St. Charles County, uh, in our state government and how everything started from St. Charles County. But I personally appreciate folks like you who are in leadership and giving St. Charles County a voice at the table and being able to weigh in on those decisions. So we appreciate everybody who serves, but we especially appreciate when you have a seat at leadership at the table because it does make a difference for our county. So John, thanks again for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it.
So with that, we'll move on to conditional use permits. Uh, and during our bills for final passage, we'll start with Bill Number 4953.
Bill Number 4953, An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-05A For Self-Storage and Mini Warehouses To Highway &amp; Properties LLC Property Owner And STL Storage LLC Applicant.
This is, um, final reading for this. So the record was closed on this after the last meeting with public comment and public testimony. So with that, we will call the roll and vote.
An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-05A For Self-Storage and Mini Warehouses To Highway &amp; Properties LLC Property Owner And STL Storage LLC Applicant. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Number 4953 passes. Move on to Bill Number 4954.
Bill Number 4954, An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-05B For Automobile, Boat, Truck, and Recreational Vehicle Storage To Highway &amp; Properties LLC Property Owner And STL Storage LLC Applicant.
Again, on this bill, we had public comment and public hearing at the last meeting. So with that, we will call the roll and vote.
An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-05B For Automobile, Boat, Truck, and Recreational Vehicle Storage To Highway &amp; Properties LLC Property Owner And STL Storage LLC Applicant. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 4954 passes. Our last conditional use permit, Bill Number 4955.
Bill Number 4955, An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-07 Concerning Housing Units In The R1E Zoning District To John H. Usman And Dorothy W. Usman Revocable Living Trusts Property Owners And Steve Gower For Pinnacle Land Development LLC Applicant.
So at the last meeting, we also had public comment, public hearing. Record is closed on that, so we will call the roll.
An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 21-07 Concerning Housing Units In The R1E Zoning District To John H. Usman And Dorothy W. Usman Revocable Living Trusts Property Owners And Steve Gower For Pinnacle Land Development LLC Applicant. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill Number 4955 passes. That will wrap up our conditional use permits for the evening. We'll move on to our public hearing on traffic regulation requests. Do we have anyone to speak on this particular hearing?
Jennifer Denny.
Jennifer? Up here, please. Yes, we can hear you much better at the microphone.
All my voice can carry just fine. Thank you, counselors. Thank you so much for having us and for putting this motion on the board. Uh, I am Jennifer Denny. I am a resident of the High Meadows subdivision. Uh, I am also a trustee on the Board of Director, Board of, uh, Board of Governors for the subdivision. Um, I've been in, served in that capacity for about four years now. Um, we, as a subdivision, have an opening at the beginning of our street, in the beginning of our subdivision from Kisker Road. I believe the average, it's, it's right past the dirt cheap in the SSM, if anybody's ever been over there before. Uh, and you turn right into our subdivision, you're going, speed limits are about 35, 40 miles an hour, I believe. And you go into the subdivision, there's a very short off, uh, curve, you know, like where you can get off onto the side. And there's a subdivision, there's a, a house right there, um, one of our neighbors that, um, right there, there's, we're asking that we put a no parking zone to be on that right hand. Um, there's quite often, um, a large vehicle that is parked there. Um, that makes it difficult to get into the subdivision if that car is parked there, if there's oncoming traffic. So you run the risk of either colliding headfirst onto oncoming traffic or getting hit from behind by anybody that's coming into the subdivision behind you. And if it ever came to pass that there were cars on both sides of the street, it would be extremely difficult for emergency vehicles to be able to access the subdivision in an emergency. In my four years as being on the Board of, uh, Board of Governors for our subdivision, this is the number one complaint that I get. Um, I always tell them, this is not a violation of our indentures. Our indentures only have a provision regarding how long a vehicle can be parked on the street in front of any given house, which is 24 hours. And these are great neighbors. This is nothing, we, we, we all like these neighbors. They're, they're fantastic. I hope they're here tonight. Uh, they might be here. Um, this is not about the neighbors. It's, it's really about the safety of the 85 residents that, you know, the safety of the people that come and go. So, um, basically that's, that's why we're here, just to make it easier to get in and out of our subdivision in a safe manner.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Next speaker?
Alicia Lucas. Hi, guys.
Hi, Alicia.
I'm Alicia Lucas and I actually live in the house that was referred to just a minute ago. Um, we've lived there since 1998 and, sorry, I'm gonna read this so I don't go off track.
It's all good.
Um, when we built the house, um, Kisker had two lanes. Um, the speed limit's been 35 miles an hour. When our kids were little, they could play outside, no issues with traffic, right? So a few years after we moved in, the county told us that they were gonna widen Kisker to four lanes. Speed limit stays 35 miles an hour, no big deal. It seemed like a good idea because then traffic's gonna flow. We had had issues with people getting rear-ended on Kisker from somebody stopping to turn left instead of going right, not paying attention on their cell phone, doing what people do apparently this day and age on their, uh, rides home. So since it's been widened, again, it's still 35 miles an hour. The traffic has definitely increased. Cars hardly ever pay any attention. I always ask any police officers that are around to please patrol. You guys will make all your money on Kisker Road because everyone flies down there, probably even if there was cops there. Um, anyway, our house, again, is on the corner of Kisker and Kelly Chris. People have come through our yard, nearly missing the, um, they have missed, rather, I'm nearly hitting the light post and the fire hydrant. One car did hit our house. We have been out in the front yard. People drive entirely too fast. That said, we also have kids. Our kids now are bigger, so that's good. We're, we're lucky there. But we have kids that play in the street, that play, do what kids do. They play outside, they're not on their cell phones or doing whatever. So that's exciting, they're outside. But they are outside and people fly in, they don't care. They're looking down at their cell phones, fixing their radios or whatever. So my husband does park his work truck. It's a commercial vehicle in our subdivision indentures. You're not supposed to park, park your vehicle in the driveway and it's too big to fit into our garage. So he does park his truck there. It also is nice because then those kids can ride. People will slow down, they don't come in. By the way, it's not just the 95 or whatever residents that live in High Meadows because we are around, um, let's go to the subdivisions, sorry. Uh, High Meadows. Anyway, there's surrounding subdivisions, there's apartment complexes, there's all kinds of people that come in and use this one entrance, although there are several entrances. I think that other people just need to be more mindful when they're coming in. Um, the road is 26 feet wide. Ron's truck takes six foot of it. There's 20 feet for two cars to still be able to pass. And if people are going slow and taking their time whenever they're coming in or when they're leaving, there's been zero accidents, by the way. No kids have been hurt since Ron's truck's been in the street, so. And we do move it. He works on the roads, so we need to make sure that he can go. He's, that's what his job is, concrete and asphalt, so he can have his vehicle there so he can leave in emergency if there's a water main break or whatever, so. Anyway, thank you, guys. Um, I have way more things to say.
Just to be clear, you are not in favor of this?
I am absolutely not in favor of that because let me tell you, we're gonna move our stuff up here.
But I wanted to make sure that you said that.
We're gonna move up here because we're not, they're not wanting to pass a thing where we don't park in the first, I don't know, 250 feet.
Okay.
That's fine. It's gonna cause another roadblock up here. So either the whole entire subdivision has to be no parking, which there's a ton of cars up the road, or they just chill out and drive the speed limit in a subdivision like they should be.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Natara Miller. Hello. I'm Natara Miller. Um, I actually live on the block of Kelly Chris, right across the street from Alicia. We're neighbors. I am also against the no parking zone as well. Um, um, the reason I'm against it is because I feel, um, that certain people park in their neighborhood on the side of the street for different, various of reasons. Um, it could be you have company, it could be, um, you're just needing to do something in your yard and you need to park your vehicles. I mean, it's just several reasons to, it's not more so of a, not say a safety issue because as she stated, you know, we've been there for years and vehicles have come in and out and there has been no issues. I sit in my front yard all the time because my children are, two of those children that sits outside and ride their bicycles all the time. And there's never been any issues that I've seen. And so as I feel, it's, it's more full of a inconvenience issue that some people may feel opposed to a safety issue. So I am totally against it. I think that you can't say, you can't park in your, in front of your neighbor, in front of your home opposed to just the block next to you can park. And it's just, you know, and like I said, you know, I've been there for a couple of years and the neighborhood is great. Everyone gets along. So I just hope that this can be something that we can all come to agree and just be friendly neighbors. But I am totally against that. I think a no parking zone will not solve the issue at all.
All right. Anyone have questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Nathaniel Nagard.
Hello?
Hello?
Uh, so I'm a resident of High Meadows. I live about halfway down the subdivision, so I'm not directly at that, that intersection. Uh, but I have almost been rear-ended on Kisker twice. Um, when I've been pulling in, there's a, the truck creates a blind spot, so you can't tell if there's another car coming. Or when there is a line waiting at the stop sign to pull out on Kisker, because people do drive too fast on Kisker, uh, they have trouble getting out into traffic. So there's commonly a line of three to four cars there waiting and you won't be able to get around the truck. Um, the truck is not by any means small.[1772.32] The truck is not by any means small, I think six feet is maybe being a little bit generous. It is a F-350 Super Duty. It's, you know, it's a big truck, it's a big work truck. I doubt it's six feet wide. My car is six feet wide and it's a tiny sports car, so I seriously doubt that. But I have been at risk there a couple of times, and then recently, we've had the fire department in our subdivision twice. I had a CO alarm go off one morning, and there was, you know, a worry there that the fire truck would not be able to get into that entrance. And I know that recently, another neighbor just across the street from me had a car hit their house, and the fire department showed up for that, and there was, they actually came a different route into the subdivision, I'm thinking probably because of that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any more speakers?
No.
All right. With that, we will close this public hearing, and we'll move on to public comments. So public comments, for those of you who are new, are limited to three minutes, you will have a timer. You're free to speak on the subject that you've put down on the card. You will hear the beeping sound go off when the timer goes off, I will thank you for your time, and we will move on to the next speaker. So please wrap your comments up as soon as you hear that. Normally, we do three speakers for, three speakers get on any particular topic. First speaker tonight is?
On bill number 4964, Marianne Boatright.
I'm Marianne Boatright, I'm from St. Peters, and I am for this bill against the mandates. So COVID is in the same family as cold and flu with 99.9% recovery rate. Masks do not prevent transmission of any virus, and says so on the box. Masks are unhealthy, causing labor, breathing increase, coughing due to fibers breathed into lungs, exposure to formaldehyde, carbon dioxide, and bacterial pneumonia. Cancer thrives in a low oxygen environment. Due to my underlying health condition and not wearing a mask, I was denied, and I examined America's Best in St. Peters, a mammogram at Metro Imaging in St. Peters, I was thrown out of Friar Tux in O'Fallon, and I was asked for my papers while shopping. I didn't realize I was in Nazi Germany, I thought I was at Schnucks. I've been discriminated against and made a second-class citizen. These are violations of Americans for Disability Act and HIPAA. We expect elected leaders to defend our rights by reining in bureaucratic and government overreach and corporate tyranny. My bucket list dream of a family Hawaiian cruise to celebrate our 50th was dashed. Norwegian Cruise Line required passengers be vaccinated, then canceled the cruise. Other lines required a negative test, I called several facilities for saliva tests to no avail. I won't allow a giant swab, probably from China, to be inserted in my nose, close to my eye and brain. I'm required to have a test to get back into my own country, but illegal aliens can come with COVID, no questions asked. Requiring vaccination of an experimental biologically is morally wrong and against Nuremberg code. It's not a vaccine. To be a vaccine, COVID has to be isolated and there can be no therapeutic available. That's why hydroxychloroquine narrative had to be destroyed, along with any physician who had the audacity to save thousands of their patients with it. Research the Ferret Study, that wasn't published. The ferrets survived the vaccine, but when exposed to COVID in the wild, they all died. Unfortunately, humans taking the vaccine probably are the experiment. Gain-of-function research takes a naturally occurring virus and makes it more deadly. Information shows that Dr. Fauci relaunched that research, moving it from US to Wuhan and funded it with our tax dollars. COVID has a patent, nothing from nature can be patented. We've been lied to. No more emergency orders, masks, vaccine passports, or businesses should be shut down. Masks in fear of damaged physical and mental health of a generation of children, many being physically and sexually abused during their at-home lockdowns. Teen suicide rate is shameful, virtual learning was a failure, although parents saw how some of their students were being indoctrinated. Seniors died in hospitals and nursing homes alone because loved ones were not allowed in, old people were used as cannon fodder. Hospitals or coroners who falsified legal forms with erroneous COVID diagnosis need to be held to account. Physicians who violated Hippocratic oath by withholding life-saving treatment because it wasn't politically correct need to be held to account. Anyone who knowingly and willingly participate in this fraud needs to be punished to the fullest extent of the law. We've been played, and history will judge us harshly for going along with their scheme. Sometimes we are called to do hard things and know ugly truths. We should pray for wisdom, discerning spirit, to know the truth and educate others and take our stand against evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne. John?
Good evening, thank you. I'm John Baer, lifelong resident of St. Charles County. My wife, Marcia, and I live out in Augusta in Councilman Brazel's district. I'm here to speak in favor of Councilman Brazel's bill 4964 regarding prohibiting mask mandates in county buildings. I won't go into a lot of detail, other than to say, if we look back 15 months ago now, when this whole pandemic started, none of us knew much about it, and there was a lot of fear. Now there's much more known, and we know that, even if you look at the CDC reports, that masks have been found to have almost zero effect on preventing the spread of COVID, when they researched counties that had mask mandates and counties that did not. So here we are 15 months later, and I applaud you guys and Executive Ailment for never instituting a St. Charles countywide mask mandate. I also applaud you for pointing out to the school districts when teachers were here that you are not to mandate what individual school districts do, that's up to the local school boards. But what I would like to see you do, and I would like to see you pass this bill, is let's put it in writing that we will prohibit mask mandates in St. Charles County buildings and continue what you've already done. And so that if it comes up again later, there won't be any question, but we have an ordinance in place to prevent that mask mandate. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jane Pushkar.
Hi, my name is Jane Pushkar, I'm a retired nurse. Having spent the last five years of my career at Barnes, we know about germs, okay? And I want to, want to thank first the councilmembers for allowing me to come here and talk, and I also want to thank Councilman Brazel for introduction of this bill. But the reason I'm really here is I kind of feel like, well, they've kind of stolen my thunder already, but that happens. I just want to kind of go back to the beginning. When we first were introduced to COVID, all we heard was N95, N95, and I want to assure you that even an N95 mask is not 100%. At best, it's 95 to 97% effective. The blue masks that you see so many of, and I'm not, please, I'm not trying to call you out for any reason, but they're even less effective. And knowing that, why would we even want a mask mandate? The other problem that I have with a mask mandate is that they're not being used properly, even the blue ones are not being used properly. People are touching their faces, people are going in behind the masks to rub their nose. I mean, there's all kinds of things that are happening in that mask while you're breathing them, such as things that you can grow in a Petri dish, which when you look at them under a microscope, you just really don't want any of that near your nose or near your mouth. Let me go back to my notes. The other thing that you're doing is you're inhaling, as we all know, you're inhaling a lot of the germs inside of that mask on a constant basis. What I'd really like to see the council do is codify this legisla, or this ordinance, I believe it's an ordinance? This ordinance, and get it on the books, because this is really kind of, it looks like we're on the tail end, but actually, I think we're moving forward to the future, because I've just read this afternoon that, guess what? There's a new variant coming, and it's just doing away with all of the, the really, the steps that we've made with getting everybody vaccinated. So you know that it's gonna be a matter of, put your mask on, no, take, now you can take it off, no, put your mask on, no, now you can take it off, because there's a new variant. So I just want to make sure that the council understands how important it is to us out here, that even though it's only gonna cover St. Charles County buildings, that it is a very important piece of legislation, and I thank you for your yes vote.
Thanks. I have two more speakers in support of the bill. Carrie Levy.
We have one more speaker.
Brenda Webb.
Well, I'll make this short, I'll surprise y'all, I'll make it short. They pretty much said everything, but I, again, just do want to thank you. I'm so glad I live in St. Charles County, but we really do want our freedom codified in law, if we have to, you know, second, I mean, First Amendment wasn't enough, so, you know, we, we really want you and hope and pray that you will pass this bill. We want to see it in writing, and we appreciate you guys standing for us, really, we thank you.
Thanks.
Amy Benenhoffen.
So I'm back.
Hey.
So they've been talking about masks in the county buildings, but I'm here to talk about the schools again, because I went to my school board meeting, I spoke, and so did 10 other parents, and guess what? Nothing got done, not a thing. And here's what I'm here to say. You guys made a resolution saying that you didn't have the power to change anything in the schools, and I get that they're their own entity, but you guys are the boss of the county executive, are you not? Okay. And who is he the boss of? The health director. So when you say you can't do anything, I'm sorry, I don't believe it. I absolutely think you can help, and you can help us, because our schools will not change it until the health department changes their recommendations, because they're afraid of getting sued. So meanwhile, we can all sit in this building mask-free, we can sit, go, hopefully, when you guys pass that, they can be in the county buildings mask-free. Meanwhile, our children are still wearing masks eight hours a day, five days a week. This Petri dish that she's talking about, that's what they're breathing in every single day. So I don't want to hear that you guys can't help us, you absolutely can. Don't pass the buck, don't pass the buck to somebody else, because that's all we keep hearing. The school board says, we don't want to be sued, so we have to wait till the health department changes their recommendation. So who is going to help these kids? Who? I want it changed. Parents, plenty of parents in this district want it changed. We want our kids free of masks. Please do not pass the buck, figure it out, help us, get our districts able to get rid of these masks, and the quarantines, and the contact tracing. If you guys feel, if the health department feels that it's so important to contact trace, they can hire their own. It is not our teachers or the nurses' jobs, they have enough to do. Thank you.
On bill 4965, Drew Weber.
I expect the same passion out of you that I deserve.
Sorry, my topic's a little less exciting.
Depends on who your client is.
Well, that's true. Sorry, Steve. So my name's Drew Weber, I'm here on behalf of Pinnacle Land Development. First, I'd like to thank you all for approving the conditional use permit to allow the reserve at Lakeview Farm subdivision. You'll notice in your packet, there is bill number 4965, and that's what I'm here to talk about, just to kind of explain what's going on. So this property on which the subdivision is being developed, as you may recall, has a lake. And that lake is being drained, and new detention basins are being built on the property for the subdivision. So there's a dam, an existing dam on the lake that dams up Horseshoe Creek, and so that's going to be removed, and the county code has a permitting process, and as does the Corps of Engineers and DNR, in order to do that, and then we're basically moving, moving the dam over to create the new, larger lake on the west side of the property. So that's what's going on, there's no change, no change to the layout that was just approved, it's just we need this permit to get the existing dam removed and the new dam installed. And then the late-breaking update that I found out tonight was that we have basically two options to preserve the fish in the existing lake. So Councilman White said that the county is, the county parks, I guess, are willing to accept those fish, but I also found out from my client tonight that we can actually put the new dam on Horseshoe Creek and, and basically connect the area where the new lake will be to the old lake and allow the fish to swim over and migrate to their new home. So I think that's what we're going to do, I guess the county option, the county parks option will be our backup option if we can't figure it out, so. But that's all I have, I'd ask that at your next meeting, you approve bill 4965. Thank you.
Drew, you know, this was your opportunity to say, please approve the dam permit.
Yeah. I leave the comedy to you.
Don't do that, that'll get us all in trouble. Any other comments?
Dan Hammer.
Welcome back, Dan.
Hey. How are you?
Dan is an investigative reporter.
Yes, I am.
Alexis Soto, there you go. He's, he's your guy, he will find you all the information you want to know on this topic.
I'll certainly try.
You do well.
I appreciate you guys letting me come. My whole, I'm 64 years old tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
And I've never been to a council meeting before. I was, now I've been at two in one month. So real quick, I got three or four minutes to go here. The conversation was seniors paying taxes, property taxes, for schools which they no longer intend to intend. You know, you've got folks paying property tax for two, three, four, five decades, and I had conversation with one of my neighbors, and I left two pieces of paper for, to get copied and get to you guys so you can read. One of them is a letter that I'm sending to Bill Kidd, I don't know if you know him, but he has a House Bill 17 that he's, said that he has actually submitted in 2019, 2020, and 2021. Apparently, it hasn't went anywhere. I don't necessarily agree with it either, I don't like it, I included his. But one of the main topics I wanted to mention was something you and I spoke about, was the property taxes. I and you and everybody pay on our house 13%. You had said something about a percentage difference because of the type of property like farm. What I did find out was in 1995, all of these hundreds of thousands of apartment complexes that are being built by these developers and then being sold before they're even finished to investors, back in 1995, they got a gigantic birthday present. Their bills were 32% commercial. In 1995, lawyers and lobbyists got it cut in half for them. So now, all of those guys are only paying 19%, same as you and I are. But in 3,000 square feet, they can fit three families, you know, six parents and six kids, wherein my 3,000 feet, I can have two retired people with no kids and still pay the same that they're paying. Also, on farm ground, really neat, I found out, I called and I talked to the assessor's office about a lot of things, and I, and that's in this letter that I left for you guys too. And I want to know what you can do to help me get something done with it, I don't know. Maybe I can call you again, we can have more of a conversation. But interesting, the farm bill deal is if I'm a multimillion-dollar developer and I have $5 million piece of property over on Mexico Road or off of Mid River somewhere, and I hire you to come over here and plant me three acres of winter wheat, now I count that as farm ground and I pay 12%, not 33% or 32% as commercial. Now when I sell it to you for $40 million, then we'll have to come back and get you guys to rezonate commercial. So if you want tax money, I think there's a lot of places you could go get it, other than my 78-year-old next-door neighbor.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, guys.
No more speakers? Happy birthday tomorrow.
Well, thank you very much.
There you go. So with that, we'll move on to oral report from the county executive.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Onto the consent agenda, any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight, or do I have a motion?
I'd like to remove the Parks and Rec on the boat dock license.
Parks and Rec on the boat dock license?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose?
That is removed. Anything else to be removed? Motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? That is passed. Mr. Brazel, floor is yours.
Okay, on the boat dock, we met with the Hoffman Group, with some of the folks who are here, if you guys have any questions for them, the boat people, and we went back and forth for several months, and I truly believe that the county did a very good job of negotiating this contract. We got to exactly where we wanted to be. The way this started was John Greif used the, already, we already had a dock ready to order, that we, I've always was telling John, we need a dock, we have a beautiful boat ramp, a good place, a lot of people fish there, it's a great place to go fishing, but when you pull down the boat ramp, you have nowhere to tie your boat up to, it's really difficult.
It's really difficult to make it easy for the fishermen and the locals to use. So the county ordered a, what is 120-foot, like a 10-foot wide dock, and it was, it's a nice dock, it's a million-dollar, about a million-dollar dock to install, and it's all engineered and everything. And we're getting ready to make the purchase, and Hoffman Group reached out to us and said, "Hey, what about if we could come up with an idea to put our," they wanted a paddleboat, I suppose, something similar to that, like they used to have down here in St. Charles. And so we met with them, talked about it, pushed back some ideas, back and forth, and finally came to an agreement several months after our first meeting. And so they have agreed to bring in all infrastructure for that boat, which would be solar, water, electric. I think they're going to do an outbuild of about a million dollars, they're going to pay, and that should pay for everything. They will not own any ground, and it'll still be owned by the people. And then they're going to add on to that dock, and they're going to pay for all that, too. And so that is what this is agreement about. There's a lot of people that are excited about it, and naturally, some of the local folks aren't so excited about it, but it's just one of those things, you know? They're not going to be using the boat dock ramp. There's no reason for them to do that. And they cannot park vehicles in the parking lot. They're going to shuttle people there, so they're not going to be taking up the parking lot. And so we got some really good stuff refilling the claws, and they won't be cutting out any trees either. I made sure that was in the contract, too, that anything will not be removed from our park without permission of the Director of Parks. And so I think it's a good thing. We're going to get some good infrastructure down there at the cost of a private developer, so I think it's good.
Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? With that, I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So the Parks and Rec Development Dock License Agreement with Ms. Augusta is approved. With that, we will move to, that'll teach me to move my resolutions around, right? Bills for final passage.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind?
Sorry?
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda so we can move up Bill 4964? Because then everything else, I think, is business.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We will move on to Bill Number 4964.
Bill Number 4964, an ordinance enacting a new section 210.025 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri relating to prohibiting mask mandates.
Mr. Brazel, do me a favor. Before you speak, can you grab one of those two microphones around you and pull one of them toward you?
Oh, this one?
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, guys, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, last meeting, I really, I had to stomach full, and I was so sick. I haven't been that sick in 15 years. So for passing a resolution, I appreciate that, I really do. It kind of goes hand in hand. So the resolution, we're getting all these complaints, especially me and Mr. Cronin, on the dealings at Winsfield School District. And so we're getting bombarded with it. We're getting, it is. So we're getting bombarded with what was going on there. And we talked to Steve about it, and so we said, "Okay, so we're going to have first to a resolution." I wanted to do, my ordinance was going to say "schools." Our attorney, which sent us to state statutes, that is their own taxing entity. Just like we can't go to St. Peters and tell them how to run their, we can't make ordinances on how St. Peters runs their business. They are a city. They got their own laws. We cannot go to a school district, and as much as I would love to, believe me, I'm 100% on board with what you're saying. But no, no, ma'am, please, I did not interrupt you, no one else did, so please let us finish. This is our time to talk. So the county would love to do that, but we can't by state statute. That's a fact. And so we can't, and so you're talking about freedom, so it's like, we're not going to big brother them. They're elected by people. If you don't like what they're doing, get them the hell out of office and get someone else in there. I mean, that's just it, you know? So, believe me, we would love to. I would love to. I don't know about these folks, but I think they would. We're pretty much on the same train of thought here. So we wanted to do the resolution so that everybody understood where we stood with the schools. We're not mandating anything. You guys do your thing. And then, so we had to do the county ordinance on the mask mandate to lead by example. So we can't tell them that we're going to just let them do whatever, so we're going to lead by example. And so we put this ordinance forward, it's on the second reading tonight. Mr. Elman passed an executive order just recent, right around that time, too, and said, "Okay, no more mask mandates in the county." It was a mandate by the employees. It was his choice, but Steve has been great through this whole thing because you got a lot of people. You got people who think one way, and you got people who think the other way, and so you got to deal with the employees. I get it, okay? I never wore a mask in this building since this whole thing started. I don't believe it, I just, no, okay? I'm not going to go down that path. But so my point is, is Steve did the executive order, and then some of the council members said, "Well, do we need to continue with this?" And my point is, yes, we need to continue with this. And there are several reasons why. Because it could come back and bite us again. And also, we have to lead by example in this county. And so the ordinance, I would still appreciate everybody's support on this, because it's important for us to say, "This is where we stand as a council." And I know you guys all do, because we've all talked about it. And if, to say it's a moot point doesn't make sense. If it's a moot point, then you might as well just vote for it. And if someone wants to wear a mask, we could sit there and debate. I don't think they're effective, whatever, but if you do, that's fine. If you believe that, then you're right to believe, you can believe that, that's okay. But don't tell me what to believe, okay? And that's what it is, about freedom of choice. And so that's where I stand on this. There's a lot of other things going on in this county. We do have a huge event coming up last week in August. It's the Faith and Freedom, it's a religious-type Christian Freedom Rally, and they expect to have 10,000 people a day at the Family Arena, and 20-something thousand a day at Frontier Park. They've got both of those under contract, and they had made sure, and like, sure, we don't have a problem with masks. And I explained to them that we don't do that in this county. We're not like that. But they wanted it secured, and I told you guys all this. And so this is very important to me, and very important to the people in the county that we do pass this, and I do appreciate your support. And you guys have been strong on this whole thing. I mean, you know, you get a lot of bad information. I don't watch the news anymore. I just don't, because I don't believe anything they say. So I seem to probably know, I think, a lot differently than people who watch the news. And so I appreciate the fact that you guys support this, and that our county is standing strong on freedom. And that's all I got to say about it.
Mr. Cronin.
I don't want to get into mask or no mask, but I can tell you one thing, and I want to address you specifically, ma'am. I got a lot of complaints about Winsfield School District, and some of it looked to me like there might have been an overzealous school nurse at one school that caused a lot of problems in one middle school. So I did read everything I could in state statutes, Chapter 44. I went through the county charter, and then the legal opinions for this county are determined by Mr. O'Sullivan right there. I forwarded it all to him and said, "Do we have the ability, as a county council, to do anything to affect the health director and/or the schools?" And I was told, "No, we do not." You are correct that the health director answers to one person, he answers to Mr. Elman, but Mr. Elman does not answer to this council, okay? There was only one person in county government the council can order what to do, and that is the auditor, okay? We have no control over the public health director. That's by state statute. It's also in the law, and I did ask for a legal opinion for that, and that's what we got. So I empathize with you. If that was my kid in the middle school, and I've got a grandson who'll be in Wabash before too many, or too much longer, I understand, I wouldn't like it either. But I'm sorry, but we are powerless to do something. I know it sounds like we're passing a buck, but we can't do it. It's not legal, okay?
Any other comments about this ordinance?
May I inquire, Mr. Brazel?
You may.
Joe, so you agree that it is moot point right now?
No, I don't. No, because...
But we don't have any mask mandate in place.
I know, but this puts it on the books to say that we agree with this.
Well, no, that, because it's moot now, doesn't mean it can't come back. That's your point.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, but it is moot now. And I hope you understand, I think you do, because we've talked about it a lot. I mean, my position on this mask from the beginning has been based on two things, just a basic philosophy that less government is better, and people should have the freedom to make their own choices. But a second thing, and equally important to me, is I think it's ridiculous for government to have mandates that they can't enforce. And that's why we never had a mask mandate in this country, because of the first, the philosophical objection, and just the fact it wasn't practical to enforce it. That's why we did away with the mask mandate, you know, we had a mask mandate for our employees, and if you remember, we hit employees, just go like this, right, before we did it. We had a lot of cases. We put that mask mandate in place because we could enforce it. And, you know, did we enforce it everywhere, all the time? No. I know, you know, Mr. Cronin was concerned about some of the people out on the highways, work on the highway department. I don't think a lot of them wore masks last summer, and I don't know, some of them may were reminded, and maybe others weren't. I don't know. I mean, the point is, though, that when the CDC said that you don't have to wear a mask if you've been vaccinated, that put us back in the same situation we've been in from the beginning. We can't ask people whether they've been vaccinated. If we know they're vax, or they haven't been vaccinated, we can't tell anybody. So we're not in a position to enforce it, even against our own people, and that's why I said, "We got to get rid of it." Okay? So anyway, that's where we are. And the other question I have, Joe, is have you looked at all, you know, I think John Weeman said it was House Bill 271, and Onder got his amendment on there? Have you looked at that at all?
No, I heard about it from Bob and...
Yeah, and I haven't read it for a long time, and I don't know what the final version looked like, but what I remember, and Joanne can correct me if she knows different, you know, it allows the health department to make emergency orders that are in effect for 30 days. And then after 30 days, then the council has to agree. Or if they don't agree, then the order disappears. So if that specifically continues to give the health department that power, is what you want to do, would that put it in conflict with that statute, assuming the governor signs it? And I have no reason to think that he won't. So I think that's something we ought to think about. The other thing is, you all, I know Joe remembers, because he's been here long enough, it's been a long time ago, but you all passed an ordinance on contracting, like at the Family Arena, in which you basically, the ordinance sets out the things we need to come back and ask you whether we can do them, but then gives us the discretion to go ahead and negotiate contracts. And as you know, we sign all kinds of contracts with performance and whatever, and, you know, sometimes if it's controversial, we consult with you. But generally, we have the authority under that statute to go ahead and negotiate those contracts. And again, is this going to be in conflict with that ordinance we already have on the books? I'm not saying it is, but it's something maybe you ought to look at before you take this step. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this bill? So for you, ma'am, I would just point out one thing. When the school board tells you they're following the county health department recommendation, you can recommend to me a lot of things, but I don't have to do it. We're not debating. I feel it coming. No, ma'am, we're done with public comment, but thanks. So it's on, I know you're going to hate this, like Mr. Cronin said, but the school board, the school, hang on, the school board has ultimate decision. And just because somebody recommends something to you does not mean that you have to do it. So at the end of the day, there is a point of resolution, and it always lies somewhere. And for the one that you're here, and I welcome you to come back every two weeks, God love you for being here and the passion that you have, and I appreciate who you are and what you're trying to get done, right? Like Mr. Cronin said, if you have a parent, if you're a parent of that child, I understand where you're coming from. But at the end of the day, it's your school board, and if your school board says, "Do that," that's where it sits, and there really isn't much we could do about it. We would love to, but we can't. The one thing I do want to say about this bill, Mr. Brazel and I have had conversations about it, is I hope people understand this is county government buildings, right? This is not Schnucks, this is not Dearburgs, this is not a private business, right? It is not that. So sometimes people read into ordinances and legislation what they want to read into ordinances and legislation. And I just want to be clear that it is what it is. So we are not telling private businesses what they can do or what they have to do. That's not our position either. Our position is clear on this one, right? Good. Any other questions or comments?
So are we intending to pass this just to accommodate this large group that's coming?
No, it's just also to make, if we're, we're telling the folks that we have nothing to do with mandates in the schools, and we have to lead by example. I mean, that's what leaders do. If you believe this, then you would support it. And if it's a moot point, then why wouldn't you support it? If you're saying, I mean, you can't have it both ways. You know, I mean, so either if you believe it's a moot point, then it doesn't hurt to vote for it. But, you know, so I'm going to support it, it's very important, and I don't know why you wouldn't support it, actually.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, we've had, you know, a large, large number of people that have come before us every single time and applauded the way St. Charles County has handled this pandemic, and what we've, you know, allowed, not allowed, not closed businesses, not had a, you know, mask mandate. And, you know, my point on this is that if we've done such a great job, and people are that complimentary, then basically, then they should continue to allow our county to continue to do the same thing that they've been doing for the last 18 months. And there's really, again, really no need, I think, for this particular ordinance, because the county's already, you know, done what the majority of people favor.
I think your question was, "Does this change anything that we're currently doing?" And it doesn't. So we can pass this, and nothing will change in our county to where we currently sit. We do not have a mask mandate in any county building or for any county employees. We do not have a mask mandate anywhere in St. Charles County. If private businesses have it, it's on them, it has nothing to do with the county. So to the answer to your question, John, yes. So there we go.
Well, also, there were some county employees that did talk to me about this and say that it was important to them. They were told that they were, had to have a 71% vaccination rate within county employees in order to lift a mask mandate. Now, that's what they said. I don't know if that's true.
Who said that?
I'm not going to say. But...
Well, that is just an absolute lie if they said it.
I can guarantee the person who said it's not lying, but I'm not going to...
Oh, so you believe them instead of me?
My point is, if we hadn't have brought this up, they would be still, the employees would still be wearing masks.
I don't think that's...
And I'm not criticizing...
No, that's not true. That decision was made after the CDC came up with this silly idea that somehow we're supposed to know who is vaccinated and who isn't. And that's why we did away with it.
I agree. Steve, I agree with you. I'm not arguing, I'm not criticizing what you're doing, but, I mean, as a council, you guys need to take some leadership here.
But if you're going here and saying that somebody said something like that, which is absolutely not true.
That's true. Okay.
Mr. Cronin.
We can beat this horse until the horse falls over, but I'll just, if you read the Section 1 of the bill, it's pretty clear. It just says, "A face mask should not be required as a condition for entry to county
as a condition for entry to county government building for the purpose of preventing or slowing the spread of COVID-19." Doesn't say future epidemics or pandemics, or whatever, COVID-20, or 21, or 25, just says the specific one. So reality is, no sense getting too worked up, if Mr. Brazel thinks it's important, I'm willing to vote for it. It doesn't do a whole lot that Mr. Elman hasn't done already, anyway, and it's really not gonna do anything for, you know, down the road, to speak of, okay? Because almost, the infection rates keep getting lower and lower, so let's get it over with.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance enacting a new section 210.025 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri relating to prohibiting mask mandates. Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Schneider?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
No. So bill number 4964 fails. Move on to bill number 4956.
An ordinance, bill number 4956, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District as per application RZ 21-04.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District as per application RZ 21-04. Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Bill number 4957 passes, move on to bill number 4958. Bill number 4958, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 21-05.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
Is a petitioner here, or, no, no, I don't want to talk to petitioner, I want to talk to Robert. I missed the last meeting, so I just got some questions.
He was here the last meeting, the petitioner was.
Was he here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Robert, this is all, isn't this around, like, all three acre lots and so forth, large?
Yes. Yes, that's right. I mean, the master plan is recommending four lots of this size for the zoning district. There's also, already three acre lots in the area around--
We just passed that one, where the guy's doing three acre lots right down the road, about 125 acres. I'm just concerned why we're going to this model in that area. This is, this is four homes per acre, isn't it?
This is, the, there's a lot, is now six acres, and so this would allow them to have two lots, they want to build a house, basically.
Oh, they want to, I'm sorry, I misread it, so it's just two, they're gonna break it into two, three acre lots?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. No, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially, one family member wants to build a house for another family member.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread it, I thought it was one to four homes per acre, no, we're all good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 21-05. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Bill number 4957 passes, move on to bill number 4958. Bill number 4958, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District with floodway and floodway fringe overlay districts to RF Riverfront District with floodway and floodway fringe overlay districts as per application RZ 21-06.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District with floodway and floodway fringe overlay districts to RF Riverfront District with floodway and floodway fringe overlay districts as per application RZ 21-06. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4958 passes, on to bill number 4959. Bill number 4959, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 21-07.
Mr. Cronin.
This is in my district, I know the property, I know Mr. Dubre, I've read staff recommendations, they recommend this rezoning. I looked at the planning zoning minutes, and the planning zoning commission voted unanimously. I'm not aware of any controversy regarding this rezoning, so I recommend its approval.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 21-07. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4959 passes, on to bill number 4960.
Bill number 4960, an ordinance approving execution of a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for automated traffic signal performance, signal optimizations on Mid Rivers Mall Drive from I-70 North Outer Road to South St. Peters Parkway.
Any questions or comments about this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance approving execution of a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for automated traffic signal performance, signal optimizations on Mid Rivers Mall Drive from I-70 North Outer Road to South St. Peters Parkway. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 4960 passes, on to bill number 4961.
Bill number 4961, an ordinance approving execution of a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for automated traffic signal performance modules, signal optimizations on Bryan Road from West Tera Lane to Route N, and on Wentzville Parkway from Route A to I-70 Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, oh, sorry, Dave, my bad.
This is in my district, and this street runs past my house, and they definitely need to be some secret, some work on the lights, is to synchronize them during heavy traffic, that's for sure.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
An ordinance approving execution of a congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the commission's public improvement for automated traffic signal performance modules, signal optimizations on Bryan Road from West Tera Lane to Route N, and on Wentzville Parkway from Route A to I-70 Veterans Memorial Parkway. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes. Bill number 4962 passes, our last bill for final passage is 4963.
Bill number 4963, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, PY21 Annual Agreement.
Any questions or comments about this bill? It's important to our workforce development director who's here, so there you go.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, PY21 Annual Agreement. Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4963 passes. It's good to see you, welcome back anytime. We will move on to bills for introduction, starting with bill number 4965, which I will refer to as the dam bill from this point forward.
Bill number 4965, requested by Michael Horbert, sponsored by John White. An ordinance approving the removal and installation of dams across a natural water course within a 62.8 acre tract at 4052 Towers Road.
Any questions or comments? Mr. White?
I just wanted to be noted that not only does this council have concerns about the citizens of our county, we also have concerns about our fish.
We do, and we appreciate the efforts for the fish.
There you go.
But we had an opportunity for a fish fry, we passed--
Hey, you can't have a fish fry without fish, right? But I have a feeling there's gonna be a really good one going on in this subdivision one day, so. With that, we'll move on to bill number 4966.
Bill number 4966, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by Nancy Schneider. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a quick claim deed to convey to the city of St. Charles a portion of real property originally acquired as right of way for the old South River Road, which is isolated from and not continues to other surrounding county-owned property and is no longer needed by the county.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to bill number 4967.